Would you like to call to order the January 28th, 2025 Columbia Borough Council meeting? Could I have a little call please? Here.
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 Sit here.
Thank you.
Here.
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 Did anyone want to offer invocation? If you'd like, please rise for a move aside. Would you like to leave some questions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Announcement of executive sessions that were gone. Any additions, deletions, or reorganization of the agenda? I'm not aware of anything. Could I have? Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as published?
So moved.
A motion by Councilperson Kaufman, and second by Councilperson Geezy. To approve the agenda as published. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Citizen comment? Non-agenda items only. The first sign up we have is Sharon Littner. All right. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak that did not get a chance to sign up? Minutes for approval. Could I have a motion to approve Borough Council meeting minutes for January 14th, 2025?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Geezy, second by Councilperson Stahl, to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for January 14th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Presentation and acceptance of reports, community development.
I acknowledge receipt of the zoning amendment reports for December 2024.
Any questions on those? I would like to acknowledge receipt of the finance reports for December 2024. They were inadvertently not in the packet, so they were put in your mailboxes. For your work years. Yes.
They are online now.
One question I had on the cell tower.
Yep.
It was at year-to-date revenue, was that $20,000? And it's adopted as $11,000?
Yeah, it was a lot more.
That's significant. Do they usually pay at the beginning of the year?
I don't remember when they pay.
I believe they do.
Okay.
Pretty sure.
Thanks.
When Kelly?
I'm pretty sure they do pay.
Pay at the beginning? Yeah. And I don't, I forget how it's, it might be like the Comcast, like it's based on the number of connections. So.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the finance reports? Now, I would also like to acknowledge the receipt of the Shade Tree Commission report for 2024. And that was in there. That's talking about what the Shade Tree Commission did in 2024, and looking forward to 2025. Are there any questions?
I just thought it was very impressive, the work that they did.
All right. Safety and marketing, Councilperson regard.
I would like to acknowledge receipt of the public state reports for December 2024. Columbia Borough Police Department, Columbia EMS, or EMS report, as well as the code compliance report, condemnation report. Fire report is coming. I want to thank, U.C., our emergency management coordinator, EMT, Jim Bartiger, for including the acronyms glossary in the back of his email reports. Very, very helpful for those folks who are not EMS fluent. Grateful for that. Also want to acknowledge the fantastic work that Fire Chief Scott Rhino has done for us for the past four years. He's with us here tonight, as many of you may know or may not know. He has announced his retirement months ago. Kevin Kaiser is going to be taking over the role of chief at Columbia 80. Been working with Scott for the last four years. He's a consummate professional, super in the know, knowledgeable guy, great leader. And I wanted to take just a few minutes to give Scott in person from us in the community, from board and community, a letter of thank you as he leaves your role. If you don't mind, you can come one up and I'll read it in public. Give you a shake and let you maybe say a few words if you don't mind. On behalf of the Borough of Columbia, Dear Chief Rhino, I want to express our deepest gratitude for your outstanding service and unwavering dedication as chief of the Columbia Borough Fire Department 80, where four years of leadership and commitment have had a lasting impact on our community. Your tireless effort to ensure the safety and well-being of others have inspired your team and everyone fortunate enough to witness your dedication. From responding to emergencies at all hours, to mentoring the next generation of firefighters, your legacy is one of courage, compassion, and selflessness. As you step into retirement, we hope we take pride in all that you've accomplished. You've been an extraordinary leader, and your contributions will continue to resonate for years to come. While we'll miss your leadership on the front lines, then we are confident your influence will remain a guiding light for those who follow in your footsteps. Thank you for everything you've done for our community. As you embrace your new chapter, we wish you health, happiness, and much deserved relaxation. And though you have other endeavors, but with heartfelt appreciation, it's signed Leo Lutz, Mayor. So, we need to hit John Hancock one at Leo. But if you don't mind, I'll just hand it right back over. Want to thank you, Scott. It's been a pleasure working with you. Educated me. I'm absolutely ignorant stepping into this role. You've given me much knowledge and maybe a better company person. Good. Is there anything you'd like to share?
Just, thank you. This is my second retirement from the position. This should be the final one. But, you know, as they say in life, you never know. But I believe this should be the final one. But we're in good hands. I say we, because I still live in the community. So obviously, I might need a fire department as well. So, but great group of people at Columbia. We've spent a lot of time, you know, I had, when I came back as chief, I only intended to be back one, two-year term. Ended up back two, two-year terms. So, but we started this transition back the beginning of 2024. So this was kind of a planned thing that we were doing. So Kevin's been, you know, been planning to take this for over a year. So things will carry on. Membership is good. And, you know, unfortunately for us and Columbia, obviously they're out right now. We are north of 70 calls already in the first 28 days of the year. So if you're not aware, when the county statistics come out, it's usually sometime in February and March. But out of 70-some fire companies in Lancaster County, when those statistics come out for 2024, the Columbia Borough Fire Department will definitely be in the top three, always are, of the busiest all-volunteer fire company in Lancaster County. So you've got to kind of let that sink in, okay? Many others have went to some form of career staff to keep up with the volume and, and lack of staffing. Columbia is very fortunate. While that volume is still rising, we are still putting fire trucks on the road every day, staffed with volunteers. So I know you will through things like tax rebates and whatever you can do. But trust me, from the work I do in my professional life, you want to keep that system as long as you can. Because you do not want to add career staffing into your budget anytime soon. So, nor do I as a taxpayer. So, but thank you for everything. Appreciate it. And thank you. Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
As Chief Rhino mentioned, Kevin Kaiser will be taking over the role of chief at 80 forthcoming. And he couldn't be here tonight. We're hoping he would be. Just to recognize him and introduce him to the public, the community. Sure. Yep. So he'll be here in the next meeting, hopefully. Mayor, you want to get up?
You should be up, Mayor.
I asked Todd if he would do this. Maybe I'd do those quick presentations. But Todd, with the years that he has worked with the fire service and police department, I thought it was appropriate that Todd do that presentation tonight. And I thank you for that. But let me go a little further, Scott. You may need to help me out. I remember when we had fired fire companies. And I believe at that time, you were the chief of one of them.
Front Street.
Yep. And then we went down to three, and you were the chief of one of them.
Still on Front Street at that point.
And do a lot of work. From five to three to one, you still stayed with the fire service. I'm thinking back, I don't know if there's what a handful that have made that trip with you that are still around. And, and then you took over and served two times as chief of the Columbia Fire Department. So, I mean, that, to me, that, I don't know, it spans more than probably my 24 years. That, that rode, that travel that you did in there with that. And I don't think we'd be where we were in order for folks like you, Scott, that come in there and did all that work. Because I know it wasn't easy. I've been to a lot of meetings. It wasn't easy. And along with that, I will say, over the, over the years, I have seen the Columbia Fire Service grow in their professionalism, firefighting, but also in their professionalism. And I myself, I'm very proud of Columbia Borough Fire Department. And, and I think you should be too, because I know you played a big part in getting that department where it is today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, man. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions on the safety reports? Personnel?
Right. I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of Alex Tinsley's resignation.
All right. There are no presentations. Mayor Lutz, Chief Brower.
I just have two quickies. Because of the weather, some things got delayed. And there were some changes. Barb and I talked earlier today, tonight about it. But yesterday, Chief Brower and I had the pleasure to attend a service for the opening of Catholic Schools Week. Typically, we would have two school kids come in here, and I agree with proclamation, you know. But being there at the service, to me, just, it meant a lot more. It was more inclusive. And that last night, because of delays with the snowstorm, we had the Martin Luther King celebration. And Barb was, I know, a big, took a big part in that. And that was a fantastic celebration that we had honoring the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. So, you know, I want to thank Barb and the Columbia area ministerial for putting that together. And there again, was able to do the proclamation there. And I think it means more there than here and then passing along. As a matter of fact, Pastor McAllister didn't know that I had previously done proclamations each year for Martin Luther King Day. So she was very pleased to have it done at that ceremony last night and receive a copy of it. That's the first copy she got. So, but there's no, I'm just taking our part, but I think we're all coming together. I just, I think it's time.
Yes.
Question for the chief in the mirror. Through the years that I've been coming to the meetings, I've asked this question a couple of times, and I'd like to try and get to the bottom of it. I just think it's another answer as to why we don't have our own police dog, our own canine. I was told we can't get an officer, but I just have the feeling that there's something else behind it. And I would appreciate it if you could kindly direct me that way.
Sure, I agree with that. Number one, the cost. Police canines are very expensive. Yes. Number two, we are required to pay the officer who handles the dog and keeps the dog an overtime rate. Or any of that cost bills for there. Number three, we're in a building phase now. I don't even have an officer who would be interested in handling that dog. So, you know, I see it as a possibility in the future. But right now, we have, as you well know, a number of officers that are scheduled to retire. We have fire now, and we have a number of young officers that we brought on who are trying to, you know, learn how to be a police officer and, and to focus on, you know, make a difference here in the community. So once we get stabilized, I see the department could consider maybe adding on a K-9 officer.
Yeah, I never heard nothing going the cost part of it. And I wasn't, you know, I didn't have them, kind of things to look at. I just, just wondering why. I just knew that.
And the other challenge, Frank, is the officer and the canine are required to do training about twice a month. So that takes the canine and the officer off the street, you know, we'll say two times, well, it's 24. So, you know, fairly large amount of time, the pair would be off the street in training.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. And why I'm bringing it up now, I just see all the shootings going on and the other things going on so close to the police department that nobody has respect for you people, for the officers and all. And I knew when we had a canine, they were afraid of it. They were afraid of that dog. And I just feel that that was a tool that was missing that maybe yous ought to have. And that's why I brought it up. Thank you for your answer.
First action item, could I have a motion to authorize the bill payments?
So moved.
Motion by Councilperson Murphy, second by Councilperson Geezy, to authorize the bill payments. Were there any questions? Yes, Sharon?
Reading through the legal bills, I just had a couple of questions. Page two. Can you just tell me about the emails recording meetings? What's the recording meetings part?
I, there was a question about, I would have to go back and look at the exact date of that on the bill. But I believe it may have had to do with whether it was necessary to record meetings, whether it was necessary to take minutes at meetings. I'd gotten a question about that.
That's kind of what I was thinking it could have been. Okay. And the other two that I had questions about are on the same page, and they are about Borough election works and election info. Is that to do with the special election coming, or is that something different?
I believe that would have had to do with, I was asked about who was, how, whose term was up and how many people were running for office in the coming election. So I was able to answer those questions.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Few things. I just want to point out, one, two, three, four different line items regarding preparation emails for MISA. Anybody's questioning that? That is in regards to the billing from MISA and covering calls, EMS calls within the borough. Anyone has any questions about that? And on page five at the top, admins hauling for $2,700 for the clean out of 447 Industry. I'm assuming that's going to be billed back to the property owner.
That's not it's rebuilt, because that's a condemned property. Are there any other questions, comments, concerns in the bill payments? None. I have a motion by Councilperson Murphy. Second by Councilperson Geezy, to authorize the bill payments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Next, I have a motion to authorize staff to contract Gary Kaufman for meter technician.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilperson regard, second by Councilperson Stahl, to authorize staff to contract Gary Kaufman for meter technician.
I would like to request that we table that, this motion, until further discussion on parking situation, parking meters. I'd like to have that be one of our topics for our work session.
One question I had, it didn't have the cost, but it looked like it was more than what we were paying Mr. Wilper. Is that cost increasing?
We are requesting to increase the cost to $3,000, I believe.
So what?
$250 a month. $250 a month, that's correct. And I would just like to point out, as Mr. Wilper had resigned the end of December, that leaves us without anyone tending to the issues of the meters. You know, myself and Wilson, we try to do what we can with it. So I'm not sure how long it's going to take until this discussion occurs. But it is a hardship not having someone in that role.
Is this a month-to-month contract or is this annual contract?
It's undefined. So I guess it could be ended in any period of time. Yes, yes, yeah.
So why don't we move forward then? Because we're not going to solve anything within a month. If I won't solve anything within the first quarter.
Even if you solve, even if you make a decision which way you're going to go, you're going to have quite a bit of time until you actually put it in place.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You could use up all this year.
I personally spent an hour fixing three meters this week.
It's not good, though.
Well, I had during the budget discussion, when we were talking about that, I asked what we were going to do and was told that we were going to service them in house. So I was kind of confused when I saw this come up. I guess that plan changed.
We had a discussion about possibly utilizing some of the existing editorial staff, but there's some difficulty with that.
Well, yeah. I mean, I had talked to Steve about that before. I said I was confused because we knew before when we tried to use, oh, we were not allowed to use the parking enforcement for that purpose. Because the union said no.
One thing I can tell you, we had a lengthy discussion, and we are, we have formulated a plan. It's that, you know, that we wanted to discuss that with you concerning the phasing out of the meters potentially.
Move forward to that.
All right. I have a motion and a second. If we vote yes, it passes. If we vote no, and it doesn't pass, it goes to the workshop on Tuesday. Because Peter had asked to have it tabled. So if we do not approve the motion, then we will table it till the workshop next Tuesday.
Are we for sure that this was, it would be only month-to-month? Like, we're not like paying upfront for the whole year?
I think we can make sure that happens before we sign anything.
We can adjust that version to make it from month to month.
Yeah. I think I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as we aren't contracting for a long period of time. Still have plenty on the conversation on Tuesday.
And we'll still plan on having a conversation on Tuesday. So can we alter the motion to say, consider authorizing staff to contract Gary Kaufman for meter technician on a month-to-month basis? All right. So that's our motion. Yes, Frank?
May I ask if he related to Derek?
I have no idea who it is.
Because, you know.
He's not.
People's going to ask me, or I'm going to hear them question. So I heard it right at the meeting, so there's no conflict there. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns? I have a motion by Councilperson regard, a second by Councilperson Stahl, to authorize staff to contract Gary Kaufman for meter technician on a month-to-month basis. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next. We have received the public security for the Chip Factory Hotel project. Could I have a motion to establish the public security for the Chip Factory Hotel project at $429,688.93?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, and a second by Councilperson Geezy, to establish a public security for the Chip Factory Hotel project. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? I mean, because it's pretty, it's pretty detailed as to what that all is, is for. So. Yes, it will be. Are there any other questions, comments, concerns on the security?
I'd be just here to project.
Yep. All right. I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Geezy, to establish the public security for the Chip Factory Hotel project at $429,688.93. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. New business. We have several special event applications. The first one is for the Columbia Lions Club, the Halloween Marty Brown Parade. You're asked to consider questions? I have a question. So during the, during the budget discussion, we had a lengthy talk on fees for special events. And it was said that everyone, including nonprofits, we have the fees, and it's up to council to waive those fees. On the, and last year, multiple times, we had asked to have the cost of these events given to us so we know, so we can actually tell the citizens that this is how much the borough is contributing into these events in the form of in-kind services. into these events in the form of in-kind services. Yet, this one and the car show don't have that amount. So while I'm not opposed to approving the application, I would also like to know how much that fee would cost, and if we're going to waive it.
I agree. I have the same thing. I had the same question. I'm still okay voting on it.
I mean, this is, this and the car show, there are two events that happen year over year. So we should know how many public works people we were needing, how many the extra police officers were needing, and all that kind of, all the costs that were incurred for this. We, we should have a really good idea.
Madam President, I do have the amount for the police department.
Okay. Because it wasn't included in here.
My apologies. We'll make sure that gets done the next time. The total for the first one is the Mardi Gras Parade. The total is $2,826.12. About $1,900 of that is personnel cost for overtime.
All right. And do we know, have we received the certificate of insurance for this one yet?
Contingent upon receipt.
Contingent upon?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I didn't see that lining. Normally, that motion gets put on here.
On the side that I just wanted to thank, Chief and I guess Pam, she must have been on the ball, reaching out to folks, getting these requests.
Please, please thank, I'm not she.
Yeah. She's under your, you know, her, you know, her responsibility, but she must have been on again, these things been early in the year, so.
It's not an easy task.
It's really cool seeing all these regulars on the same night.
Yes, so good.
Of course, I would like to see all of them. Not just, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, I was going to, I appreciate you having the number, but I'd still like to see all the numbers. And I would like to see, yeah, I would like to see it for the car show as well.
We'll get those together. I do have, I do have the amount for the car show as well. You want that now?
Mm-hmm.
It's $2,583.68. $1,709 of that is personnel cost.
And what would be the other costs?
The expensive cost of the signs and the cost to hang the signs.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Are we voting on the Halloween parade, or are we waiting till we get confirmation?
I'll get voting on it.
I think we would have the minute to make it continue upon receipt of the.
Yeah, we do.
It's already.
It's been exactly agreed it was the motion, but I haven't made a motion yet. Do I have a motion to approve the Columbia Lions Club to host their annual Mardi Gras Parade on Thursday, October 23rd, 2025, from 5:30 PM to 9:30 PM, using the traditional parade route as outlined on the facilities use request, contingent upon receipt of the required certificate of insurance?
So, Madam President, you want to add waiving the fees, that motion?
Yes. And waiving all special event fees. So I have Kaufman and Bregard. All right. Are there any other questions? I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Bregard, to approve the special event application for the annual Mardi Gras Halloween Parade on Thursday, October 23rd, 2025, from 5:30 PM to 9:30 PM, using the traditional parade route, contingent upon receipt of the required certificate of insurance, and further waiving all, all fees for this event. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, the, the car show. Are we?
Let's move forward.
Move forward with it? All right. Do I have a motion to?
Should we discuss it first? Yes, we can discuss it.
Yeah, we can discuss it without having the motion, because.
Yeah, I have to say, we'll think twice.
Yeah.
Right, that's same.
We still do.
I was just curious, does the, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Which one are we talking about?
The car.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the next one. Go ahead. I'm sorry. My bad.
Does anyone have a problem voting on the car show?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the Columbia Lions Club to host their annual Thunder on the River Car Show on Saturday, June 21st, 2020, 2025, from 10:00 AM till 2:00 PM, using Borough Streets as outlined on the event request, contingent upon receipt of the required certificate of insurance, and waiving all fees?
So moved.
Motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Bregard, to approve the Columbia Lions Club to host the annual Thunder on the River Car Show on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, using Borough Streets, contingent upon receipt of the certificate of insurance, and waiving all fees. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
This won't, this won't affect your vote. We see the call from the Mount Bethel. Mount Bethel holds the last ride the same day as the car show. Mount Bethel asked if the car show could be extended up to Seventh Street, which would be more inclusive for the traffic flow, traffic flow of people to go up there and take, take part in that event also, which is a big money breaker for Mount Bethel. My comment back was, I would advise council to pass the use of facilities as, as presented, and Chief and I will get with Lions Club and Mount Bethel folks and see if that is at all feasible.
Just, yeah, just extend it up a little bit.
Well, my concern was, my concern with that was CBS, but CBS has a rear entrance and exit in their parking lot. So, but I still would like to discuss it with the Lions Club. I don't want, I don't want the two organizations to go in overheads about it. I think we can find a, a solution to it. And I don't want to say the borough should arbitrarily say, no, we're going to extend it up a lot, because it's not our thing.
Well, I don't know that Lions Club, I don't even know if they should have to extend it up. You close that road off because of a request, an embedded request from the Mount Bethel, and then Mount Bethel can use that section of the road for any A12 plus.
That's true. That's true. And I think, I think we can work that, that way. But either way.
I mean, let the Lions Club know. It's awesome.
Yeah, we need to let the Lions Club know.
And I'd also sit down and see if that's my thing.
Yeah, the other part of that is, you know, because we have the barricade.
Right.
Because we have the barricade, Seventh Street, and also that part of the road is in front of their parking lot.
Right.
Both parking lots.
Right.
We'll work it out. I wanted you to know that that question has existed.
Right.
Heather, is it my understanding that these organizations have paid these fees before?
No, they have not.
So, being that we're waiving them, why did it even come up?
Because it was a discussion during the fee schedule that everyone was subject to the same fees, and if council wanted to waive it on a case-by-case basis, we would.
And you know what it was? Okay.
All right. Are there any other thing? I called for the, the vote, so I'll just repeat it again. I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Bregard, to approve the Columbia Lions Club host the annual Thunder on the River Car Show on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, using Borough Streets as outlined on the event request dated 1/1/25. The approval is contingent upon receipt of the required certificate of insurance, and all fees are waived. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we have a special event application from Raven Ridge Wildlife Center to host a baby shower at the River Park on April 5th.
Is this inside Columbia Crossing or outside?
No, outside.
Of course, the animals.
Right. And that, yeah, that's why it's coming to us. Yeah, they have like food trucks and all that stuff.
Food trucks. I see you have a certificate of insurance. How do, how does liability for food trucks, how's that handled? Is that, is that between food trucks and insurance company and?
Yeah.
Or?
I mean, they still, the, the insurance is on that vendor. But there are requirements for the borough as well. Like you have to have like transient.
If you get record of all of that, is that part of the.
That, that is something that I had discussed with Mark previously, and I think where you get the, for the overall event, you have the insurance requirements. And I think it's satisfactory that the, the, the person who is running the event, or the organization that's running the event, have the insurance information on file of each, of each food truck in that, or whatever it may be. I, I, you know, I'm thinking of a craft show, right? Like each individual vendor is not going to have their own insurance generally. But things like food trucks like that, you generally are going to be required to have insurance of some sort.
Do we need to have proof that for X's, let's say, food trucks, they're getting back over somebody, and there's an injury, they don't have insurance, how liable is the borough?
I don't think the borough would be liable in that situation, and there would still be insurance to go back upon from the organizer of the event. Yeah, yeah.
Just to make sure we're.
Yeah, I think you're covered. Absolutely, the question is a good one. I think, I think you're covered there with what you're doing with the, requiring the overall event to have insurance in that way.
Okay.
Yep.
Does anyone have a comment on this?
I had a question too on food trucks. Normally, for food truck vendors coming in, don't we have like an application process or a fee schedule for them? So are those just exempt from that if they're under the umbrella of this event?
Not currently. What I'll tell you is that the, the requirements of your current transient business ordinance are beyond odorous, to be completely frank with you. They are, they're wild. I mean, they are like, you have to show us proof of vaccinations and things like, I mean, it's, it is beyond fingerprinting, the pale, yeah, fingerprint. It is really, so you, you, Steve has talked to me about getting a couple of examples for you guys to talk about at the workshop, and I actually was just looking at a couple of them here earlier. So we'll make sure that you guys are prepared for that. But I think it, it's the most important thing, and I think when, when that ordinance was written was back in the early 90s, I believe. And there wasn't the robust State Department of Health at that time. You had more of a local Department of Health. And the most important thing with those food trucks is that they've got their safe, their safe serve and their state health licenses. So I think as long as that's the case, I think you can kind of, as long as they're part of a bigger event, you guys obviously can always waive any of your ordinance requirements, except for your zoning ordinance. But I think in, in that situation where you've got an event and they want to bring some food trucks in, it would be, it would be reasonable certainly to waive those requirements for the transient business ordinance and say, just make sure you have your health licenses, so.
So if I may add, that, this is something that we want to make sure is on the agenda for the workshop on Tuesday. I've already talked to Heather about that. And that's also some of those, the time when we can work out the conditions of possibly waiving this. I think, I think we just don't want to inhibit people coming into spring. They're already making plans for spring. So we'll, we'll just bring that up and try to come up with a direction that, that you guys want to go.
Any other questions? Does anyone have a problem voting on this one? Do I have a motion to approve Raven Ridge Wildlife Center?
So moved.
Oh, hold on, to host the, I was yawning. To host the wa, the baby wildlife shower, creating education crafts, games, animals, and food trucks at Columbia River Park on April 5th, from 9:00 AM to 5:30 PM. All, do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
All right. I have a motion by councilperson Murphy, second by councilperson Stahl, to approve Wild, Raven Ridge Wildlife Center to host a baby wildlife shower, creating education crafts, games, animals, and food trucks at Columbia River Park on April 5th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Next, we have a special event application for Susskind National Heritage Annual Riverfest on June 28th. Are there any questions on this? Does anyone have a problem voting on this one?
No.
No. One question on this. On the certificate of insurance, I'm not sure that the borough itself is specifically spelled out. Is that correct, on that certificate of insurance for that event?
Borough should be added.
I believe it says Columbia Crossing, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
It was the additional name feature.
Yep. So will we get contingent upon the certificate of insurance reflecting Columbia Borough?
Because the crossings is not a zone, or was, the crossings is not a zone ending.
All right. So I have a motion to approve Susskind National Heritage to host a Bridge Burders Challenge on June 28th, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, using Columbia River Park kayak launch, 50% of the boat ramp, as well as the grassy area around the building, contingent upon receipt of the certificate of insurance showing Columbia Borough as additional insured.
So moved.
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Bregard, to approve Susskind National Heritage to host a Bridge Burders Challenge on June 28th, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, using the Columbia River Park kayak launch, 50% of the boat ramp, as well as the grassy area around Columbia Crossing Building, contingent upon the certificate of insurance naming Columbia Borough as additional insured. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we have a special event application for the Clifford Edmonds Scholarship Men's Basketball Tournament to be held the first weekend of June, June 6th and 7th. Are there any questions on this one?
On this one here, I'd like to waive fees as well. It's an annual grant. It's a scholarship fundraiser.
I could just, how do these dates coincide with the working?
I don't know.
That depends on what do we start on?
I was going to ask that too. I don't know where we are on, on that timeline.
I think, Steve, I don't know if you have any information on that. If approved, it should be noted, you may have to cancel because of this. So, so I think we can make, once we, once we have an actual time, that construction's going to start. We can see where it's at at that particular point. But there is one basketball court, which is the court that they're using now, that is not.
is not going to be changed in the renovations. They're going to be adding two more.
I know, there's two courts available.
Adding one, okay, they're just adding, adding one at a time. So I, I, I don't think it's, um, I think it's premature right now to say we can't use it. I think we'll have to see if the contractors can work around it for that.
That, that is what I'm, what I'm concerned about is, is surround. I mean, of course, or okay, well, is there going to be construction materials there, um, equipment and things like that there? Because it gets crowded around.
Yeah, it does, it gets crowded around, and I don't want, I don't want to have. Yeah. Yeah, so. Perhaps we wait on this to?
Well, my only thing is, we didn't even start bidding yet. We have to come to the council and get approval on it.
Right.
So if that happens in February, March to a bid, April.
Normally after we open the bids and accept the bid, they start pretty quickly.
This, this will go very fast as well, because we do have a by the end of the year time limit on this. It has to be completed by the end of the year.
Right, but what, what the, uh, what the changes encompass won't really, with the exception of the sewer area, is the only area that's really going to be serious construction.
Well, it's going to be the alleyway that's going to go up there because we're putting water lines in, and, and really it's going to depend on when it starts. So, so maybe I'll reach out to Kurt, maybe they can change it to an earlier time prior to breaking ground. Or at least he should be well aware that we're running into this situation and things could really change. Um, maybe I can work with him and find a different venue for one year or, you know, look, right now I don't think we have enough.
When they started, first start, they used more courts. They used, uh, over here, that, that, okay. Uh, Nicole. Sure. Table is, table is, could find that one.
That makes a lot more sense to me, at least gives me an opportunity to speak with, uh, with parties and.
Yeah, well, we don't have a certain, we don't need the table, we can just not vote on this one tonight until we get more information. Okay. All right, um, next, we have, we're asked to consider authorizing staff to contract with Commonwealth Code Inspection Services to provide a part-time zoning officer. And this is due to the resignation of Alex.
Is, is, is this like a attempt to hire kind of arrangement, or is it just having somebody come in?
Yeah, like we did when, at the beginning of, um, 2020.
Yeah.
After Jeff retired.
Do we know who the design officer is going to be?
It's going to be John.
John?
Yep.
Sounds new to me.
So, so we ran into some issues with being able to hire anybody from Commonwealth, because I believe we went through them as well in the past. And then we went to C.S. David, C.S. Davidson, and the only person that they have available was also a person that we didn't want. So unfortunately, there is only one option, and this is John.
We had, we had a barber, I believe it was barber. Donna, excuse me.
Yeah. So, so, so John was with Donna for a period of time. I apologize, I don't know his last name, have not met with the gentleman yet. But, um, he, he was here at the Borough with Donna for some time, so he is somewhat familiar with the Borough. I have to be frank, we don't have any, anybody else available anywhere in the county. The next closest zoning officer that we could hire is in Berks County, who came with core And we have a zoning hearing board tomorrow.
Are you saying you propose to hire this person part-time? How, how long, how long?
To hire somebody?
Okay, so you, you're going to continue on?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a temporary person.
So it'll be, uh, Monday and Wednesday is when we're looking at happening then. So it won't be a 40-hour work week, it'll be Mondays and Wednesdays we're looking to have, have some expertise in the zoning.
Questions?
We need to.
Issue voting? I have a motion to approve, to authorize staff contract with Commonwealth Code Inspection Services to provide a part-time zoning officer. A motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Bregard, to authorize staff to contract with Commonwealth inspection services to provide a part-time zoning officer. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? I just realized something. We don't have one here to authorize staff to advertise for a zoning officer. So I have to wait on that, right? Yeah, okay.
We can put it on that in the workshop, can't we?
You could, yes, definitely.
next, we're asked to approve a demolition permit at 1310 Meekster Avenue, removing the single-family dwelling and garage to extend the car lot dealership.
My name's Paul Kraus, I'm the one that was bringing this forth here.
Will this, if approved, will this kick in a, a development permit?
I, I don't know.
I was told it was not going to require.
Is this a stone lock or a paper?
Uh, it's a stone lock.
That's why.
That's not as well, I'm concerned, well, I'm concerned with that is one, one thing. Concerned with, uh, the, uh, the in and out onto 462. What are these?
We have, um, three driveways already that, that comes in and out of 462. When we tore down the other building, uh, that was next to it, we used the one that, uh, the driveway that was already present there.
So you don't plan on putting another curb cut in?
No, no.
I think there is a curb cut there.
There is for the, for the drive.
I know, I'm saying there's, there's another one for Dr. Monno's house, it's already there.
Yes.
But they're not going to use that one.
No, no, there, there, there is one present for, uh, the house that I'm planning on tearing down, yeah.
I would also like to add, I received, received this email from Mary Wickheimer. Um, we don't have anyone from planning here this evening, but she said, uh, this is to advise that the Columbia Borough Planning Commission, after January 21st meeting, reviewed the application for the property at 1310 Meekster Avenue. Mr. Kraus was in attendance and addressed concerns and questions of commission members. Following this discussion, planning commission voted unanimously to recommend that Borough Council approve the demolition application. I'm sending this, um, since it wasn't sent, there was no mention of it in the packet. So she just wanted us to be aware, planning commission did approve, um, recommend, recommends approval.
We bought the property because it was in very bad condition. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, man, yeah, it's pretty rough.
Yeah.
Are there any questions, comments concerning this, yes, Frank?
Chris, how much you paid for the property?
That's.
That's not asked, but yeah, I, I paid 100% of the amount.
Yeah, okay. Um, according to Zillow, the house, I guess, it's in perfect condition.
But it's not.
It's not.
It's not.
It's not.
Far from it.
The roofs gave in, and it's awful.
Yeah, you didn't let me finish. You can laugh all you want. Uh, but if the house was tip-top, they're looking like 272, 272,000. I didn't see the house, I seen the pictures. Uh, the pictures really made it look bad because there was no cleanup inside. I can take any house and make it look bad, that you're going to want to demolish it. I've seen it happen in this town. Uh, I guess I'm concerned because we had so many houses being torn down and nothing put up in place of it. Uh, we have one at Knights in Chestnut, we had three on Churrie Street, there was one out in the, the pipe right across from Bob's, uh, is that where I just bought? I mean, there's numerous properties that we keep eliminating, and somehow or another we have to, uh, I know we have our friends and whatever, but we have to look at not getting rid of these single-family houses. That's what gives the, uh, the average person a chance to achieve their home ownership. So sure, they can move into apartments, but we keep eliminating this, plus it takes the taxes off the tax roll. It's, it's, it has to be stopped. I know there was a couple of meetings on this a while back, maybe America can remember, I don't know, but they decided, hey, we have to look at this. In this demolition, uh, you remember what happened with the McGinnis when we got ready to tear that down? And again, I went to the planning and Eric was there, we both heard some of the questions. I didn't hear what I wanted to hear. Can I ask you, what kind of insulation is in the building?
Uh, wait, I don't know.
See, this code, isn't code supposed to know this? Because when they do the demolition, uh, this gets airborne throughout the area, and you remember what happened with McGinnis? Look how much that added to the, if we're not going to care about it, that's another
So we could do an inspection of the building, we can find out if there's any kind of asbestos or any of that, but all that is part of his permit that he needs to acquire in order to tear this down.
So how did that come about with the McGinnis property? How did we end up paying, I don't know how many thousands more?
Be, be honest with you, I was not.
Oh, I'm sure.
Because, because our inspection showed that it was in there and needed to be remedied.
It would have been a little different too, seeing that the Borough in the building, we would have found out while we did those inspections on behalf of the Borough.
Yeah, well, Heather just said the inspection showed that it was in there. That's something we ought to know, because the airborne's come out into the public, uh, there is other properties around there, and I guess people breathe this still.
But now that it's his property though, Frank, he is under, he is under that responsibility to have it checked if there is any asbestos. He has to remediate it properly, he can't just throw it in, in a dumpster, you know? It's all the same rules.
My only point is, we have codes doing the inspection, why wasn't that done in the inspection process?
We don't have codes that actually do this inspection. We, our codes do a rental inspection, so we do, do not do building inspections, so.
Uh, the other question I want to ask, there was numerous pictures, colored pictures, who took those pictures? Who's?
No, I would assume Mr. Alston, we did.
Okay, okay, very good, thank you.
Um, I, I do want to point out here though, Frank, that this property is located in the Highway Commercial zoning district.
I understand that.
And five right, single-family residence is not permitted use in the Highway Commercial District. So with the amount of restoration that this would require, would trigger them needing to come to zoning, a zoning hearing to get approved, or get a special exception or a zoning variance to continue that to be a single-family residence. Not only that, you talked about the taxes, the land is much more valuable as commercial land than residential land. It's, it, it, it generates more tax revenue as commercial property than it does a residential property. So while I agree, you know, we don't want to see the how, you don't, you don't want to lose a house, you also have to look at the surroundings and, and you have to look at it as a whole picture. And in this case, it makes sense, because there are too many, you know, we would not be able to get a new code one there.
Okay, now, uh, when Mr. Kraus bought this, apparently somebody had lived in it before that, it might be some commercial, but they lived in it like it was residential, and.
Right. It's a pre-existing non-conforming use, right? Meaning that that house was there as a single-family residence prior to that area being zoned highway commercial. And that's, you can continue that use until you've got to do major renovations or expansions, and then, and then you've got to come before the zoning hearing board, because it, it eventually, you know, we, again, when you've got a, when you've got a property that's in this condition, right? If you've got to do major renovations, I don't know what exactly the percentage is in your, um, in your zoning ordinance, but if a certain portion of the property is torn down or damaged or expanded, then you've got to come before the zoning hearing board to get a special exception or a variance, normally a special exception, um, to do anything to that property, which makes it really expensive.
To continue that existing non-conformity.
Right, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Is, is there anything in the zoning as far as moving the building?
I, I, I think you could move it to somewhere else that, you know, that you could utilize a house like this, but I'll be honest, looking at the pictures, and I'm not an engineer, but I, I would be real worried about this building surviving any type of move.
Yeah, well, you're going, you're not net carpet.
I know, that's exactly what I said.
Yes, that's the property. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's a property under decision.
Yeah, I understand that, but, you know, if, if I was on some of the different committees, I would look for ways to do the best for overall everybody, not just the property owner. I would look at ways that might help it. Really, I laid down, took a nap to sleep, and when I got awake, the light bulb went on, I thought, I have a lot, a block away. And what would be the, the, the things involved with moving that house there? And when I think of a state road, I think, no, I just, I'm not even going to ask Mr. Kraus for that. But there, there's always different options, and, and I like to go to meetings and hear the questions asked, and when I don't hear them, I have to come here and I bring them up. But, thank you anyway.
And Frank, I just wanted to say, you know, I, I know, we were trying to make the light of this or belittle it or anything, but we were kind of laughing before, but it's nothing funny about it. You know, I, I, you know, I drive by this house, I'm sure you do, you know, looks can be, looks can be deceiving. These pictures were just, I can't believe somebody owns a home, not a home, since I'm 20 years or 21 years old, you know? It's your home, how, how can you let your own home get into such disrepair? It's just, it's unbelievable, and it's a shame for us to lose another single-family home. I totally agree with that, but again, it's just like, you know, when you're a homeowner, that's your investment. How do you just let it go to that crap, to that, that condition where you just have to sell it to get rid of it? I don't know, maybe we should be inspecting homeowners too, I don't know.
Sorry, I didn't catch all of what you said.
I said maybe we should be inspecting homeowners.
I can't agree or disagree with you, so.
We're going to move? Does anyone have a problem?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the, um, demolition at the property at 1310 Meekster Avenue, removing the single-family dwelling and garage to extend the car lot dealership? All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Geezy, and a second by Councilperson Bregard, to approve, or Murphy, I'm sorry. I thought I heard you say Todd. My ears are clogged, I'm really struggling.
That's fine.
So I have a motion by Councilperson Geezy and a second by Councilperson Murphy to approve the demolition regarding the property at 1310 Lancaster Avenue, removing the single-family dwelling and garage to extend the car lot dealership. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
All right.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate, uh, appreciate your understanding on this and we'll have it looking good. A lot better than what it does now, so.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right, staff reports, comments, and announcements will start in a little.
Not too much this evening. You will have my, uh, my lean report at the next, uh, voting meeting. Um, just been working on some write-to-know requests as well as, um, getting together those ordinances for your, your next, uh, your next workshop so that you could take a look at maybe making some changes to that transient business, uh, section of your code.
Great. Uh, Derek, so here, Secretary of Treasury.
So counsel, I have a, uh, mental health first aid class notification that is being, um, administered through St. Peter's and Holy Trinity. Uh, they just, uh, just notified me today, so I put some brochure, brochures out on the table in the front. They do need, um, people that are willing to log in and register for this. So there's a QR code, anybody that's interested from the public or council that would be interested in doing it. And again, it's February 15th at St. Peter's Church. That's all I have.
All right. Boards, commissions, and committees, uh, there's a zoning hearing board tomorrow. In your packet you have proof minutes from the Civil Service Commission, the LASSA meeting from the member Planning Commission Workshop, and the, uh, Planning Commission meetings. For our council comments, Councilperson Bregard. Councilperson.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing, thanks.
All right, well, I have one very exciting thing that I'd just like to share with everyone and I can show you. We officially today received the NPDES permit for the soil stabilization at McGinnis. We had been, we had been waiting for this for the better part of eight months it had taken to get this reviewed. Um, we were very concerned because we had gotten some questions, um, that we had to respond to and, uh, then we got further questions on it and, you know, ELA worked to make sure, we got ELA and Derek worked to answer the questions to make sure we got this. Um, this is important because then it assures that we are going to be able to move dirt this spring. So, woo-hoo, NPDES permit, considering this. I almost cried when I saw the email. Oh, what? The NPDES stands for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems. Um, it's basically from the conservation district that says everything that we have planned to do to reduce the pollutant discharge while we're moving the dirt is good.
Is this permit good?
Yes.
I do know what it is.
Yep, so. No, that's okay, so we have our first, our first round of permit is done and we are on track now to be able to bid out that project. Um, we should be seeing that, what did we say, April?
I believe, yes, that's, that's the goal at this point in time, yep.
Uh, or March, we were gonna approve to bid it.
Yes, I think the, the goal was to get the bid out.
Out.
So not on April 1st, but you guys obviously can get approval for that bid in prior time.
And then open bids mid-May and ready to go. So we're on track now. There was a question for a while. Um, announcement of next meeting at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, February 4th, Council will hold a workshop. Tonight, we are going to be adjourning to an executive session to discuss personnel issues. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I move it.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Geezy to adjourn at 8:15 p.m. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, we're adjourned. We have checks to sign.
Hey.
This, just to let you know, doesn't have any backup to it.
Uh-huh.
But it's a reprint of a.